Fifth meeting of the Mount Pleasant Township Plan and Commission is duly in order. Okay, time to turn this down in here until somebody calls in. Roll call, I see we have three here, so we do have a forum. I see no public, I hear no public, I'm assuming there is no public comment. I'd like to make a motion to approve the February and March meeting minutes, since we didn't have February's last meeting. I'll second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to switch to new business, the order which I have along the agenda. And we're going to do Range Resources second, we're going to do the Orton subdivision first. Tom, I want to ask you a question, but I believe I already know the answer. Unless Kathy and I are in a tie, the fact that Bill is a party to this really doesn't come into play. Since we do have an initial forum, we don't have to have a forum on the boat, do we?
That's right, out of necessity. Bill, and your recommending boy as well. Probably the applicant should probably kind of, yeah. Sit in the applicant's chair and do his application and then return after this one.
I had a good conversation with the zoning officer today, prior to this, and there were a few things that did have to be addressed. We have the township engineer here, he gave us a wonderful list that's in here. And looking at the map, all of the items that were requested to be addressed appear to me. Kathy, here, I'll let you see this, this is the two pages that actually matter. The map that's folded up is the old one, this is the new one.
Is this, is this all I have to read right now?
Yeah, this is, these are the bold items or the ones.
Oh, I gotta go further.
That, right. That were brought into question, and yeah, Bill's got the pages backwards or something there, I'm trying to figure out what happened, but. Or me, George, has the papers backwards, but generally speaking, all the items in the bold do appear to be addressed. The difference in the listings are there, yeah. The deed and book reference has been corrected, the scale's been corrected, and the full information for the bordering property has been added. Do you have any other concerns about this subdivision? I entertain a motion that we send it to the supervisors for approval.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to move the Orton subdivision to the Board of Supervisors for approval. I'll second that. Are there any questions?
That would just be subject to those outstanding comments you mentioned.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Bill, you want to come back and join us? You didn't have anything to add as the citizen, did you? Okay.
I'll sneak out, let these others sneak in, so we don't have too many people in here.
We appreciate you coming, as always.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, it worked out. As I said, I spoke with the architect there, or with the surveyor, and made all those changes.
I, I, I really appreciate personally the way you've been working with Mounds and the other surveyors and that to get this stuff cleaned up.
Trying to make it as smooth as possible.
I appreciate it, big time. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, I've seen you from all over.
Yeah, I know, I haven't seen many people like that.
You're right.
Person.
Nobody gets to see anybody anymore.
My favorite one, but it doesn't.
Moving on to the second item of new business, Range Resource Request for the Williston Samuel Pad. Welcome, folks.
Hi, thank you.
Thanks for waiting outside and helping us to keep the small room in as tiny of fashion as we can under these conditions. We highly appreciate it. I've got the engineer's report in front of me. Is there anything that you would all like to say before we get moving? I know there always is, so I just.
There's always something to say. First off, my name's Ally Ondash, I'm taking over for local government for Mount Pleasant. So I've been with Range for 10 years, and I work in a bunch of other municipalities, but I've never been here. So I just wanted to say hello, and if you guys need anything, please, if you don't already have my contact information, I'm happy to give that to you, anything you guys need or have any questions or issues, I'm here to ask. So what you guys have in front of you is the Williston Samuel Conditional Use Binder application. If you need any extra copies, I do have.
Excuse me, can you turn it, you're using it, please?
Before we all fall asleep.
Relax.
I could only legally turn it down in case somebody were to call in, so I got it about as low as I think I can go and still know if somebody does call us.
Alright, so, that's no problem. If anybody does need a new binder or needs a copy, I have one here. But we submitted a initial use application for the Williston Samuel. It is on the property of Karen Brandall and Joseph Brigich in an A1 zoning district that Range has leased with. DEP approved ESCG P3, there's a copy in the binder if you need a copy of it. The well pad and access road, the access road is a short one, it's only 105 linear feet, and the first 50 will be paid, and that is off of Washington Avenue. The plan, the, the pad total can house 14 wells, but we're only planning four initially. And the timeline for that, we have construction slated for August, and I know that you all know that schedules can vary pretty significantly, but from what we have currently as of today, the construction scheduled for August of this year, with the air rig following in October, the big rig following in Janu- early January next year, and then fracking sometime in the spring, May-ish timeframe. The route to get to the site is.
I'm sorry, just, the, the, October, can you run through that time?
Yeah, sure.
And I know, I know it's subject to.
No problem, air rig, we have October this year through mid-November. The big rig is January of 2022, and then completions is around April or May next year. So our route is 519 to Sabo Road, .9 miles on the right to Washington Avenue, and then it's just about .2 miles down that road. The entire route that we have has been bonded since 2008, and I was told from our road supervisor, Matt Ford, that there is a temporary bridge out there in place, but Range does have permits and plans to replace that. There will be sound.
Is that at the intersection of Sabo and?
In Washington?
That bridge you mentioned.
Yeah.
It's Sabo and Washington.
The creek, the bridge is down there at the bottom on Sabo, the creek, on my, where was the building?
The bridge?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the bridge you're talking about?
I thought it was at the intersection, but I couldn't.
No, it's not, it's at the bottom, it's five, or 300 feet off of 519.
Okay, very good point.
Yeah, it's after your two, it's after the two driveways for the new building down there, so.
Sorry, Bill, that was a little cut and.
No, that's alright.
Way around here. Sound holes we're utilizing to mitigate the noise, and the plan for the fracking for the water, we are pumping it from the Carol Baker, which is a reused impoundment in Chartier Township. And freshwater pump will, our freshwater will also be pumped into the site via a meter well at the bottom of the access road through PA American. And trucks will be staged at Karnes B, which is the staging area we have out in Smith Township.
We're going to continue to use the Karnes site, okay.
Yes, yes, sir. And that's about all of the, the higher items that I had noted on my sheet. I don't know if Carl, if you want to add anything, or if we want to talk about the letter, kind of, kind of where you guys want to go.
Well, there's, there's a couple of quick items we want to make sure we hit. Bill, you want to go and start?
Probably the biggest thing concerns the resident is with some of the rig moves, they've been getting complaints from people, they're not following the bus schedules, they're moving equipment and stuff during the bus schedule times, and people have commented on that.
One of the other things is. We had a little bit of an issue on Everly Road with the last move that went through.
Oh, Mr. X did reach out, yeah, we did have some problems with that.
And that wasn't in relation to a particular, that was actually a regional move, I think, going through.
Yeah, that was coming through, I'm just trying to say, I mean, being that you are going to be doing all that, that needs to be corresponding with, you know, the, the school bus times up in there, on it, you know, when they're doing the construction and just something to look at.
Mr. Orton, I can report that after you guys reported that to me, I, we did a conversation, just to give them a heads up.
And then one of the other things is, maybe you guys can get together with the, the road foreman and the township and them people on the intersection up there at Sabo and McCurry Road, not McCurry Road, Washington Avenue. If they could maybe come up with a different way of doing that route, the intersection or changing something to make it easier for.
Have, have you traveled Sabo all the way to Washington?
I have not.
Okay, you, you need to go to the top of Sabo Road where it connects to Washington, you'll understand why we're interested in some, some, some information as to how you actually plan to pull off moving the rigs through that area. It is not, in my engineering opinion, it's not going to be an easy move for you without something being done there. So that information about what your plan would be to make it passable for the equipment that you're talking about, I think is going to be a very important part of this as it goes forward.
And you're suggesting, or you're suggesting that they may want to take a look where they need to tweak feather a little bit, the turning radius.
It's a triangle Y spread system at the top of Sabo. And neither direction, I mean, you're obviously not going to be able to go left and make the bend to come back to your pad, and when you look at the one that goes to the right, you're going to see that there may be other issues as well. So just some further information on how you actually plan to move this equipment on Sabo, considering state. I understand it's bonded.
Sure.
Bonding something is one thing, actually being able to pass it is a whole nother thing, so.
Now, I think Matt has some, I mean, once he gets the, once the bridge is replaced, I think he might approach the location differently, so. I don't know if that plays into part of that or not, but I know that, is this, that's from the north, or that's from the?
Well, no, the Sabo. Sabo is.
Use this map here.
Happens, Washington Avenue goes straight out. Sabo comes up and you could go left to go.
It's terrible.
Washington, or right to board Hickory, and there's a bunch of trees in there.
Okay.
It, it got a Y up there, it's just, the bridge is way down here.
To go to Washington, there's a hillside there, and you can't see what's coming.
Okay.
When you're down the bottom.
And that uses it frequently, so.
Yeah, when you're at the new building, when you're at the new building, that part of Sabo Road, I understand how the bridge is going to come into play, and that'll make it so you, you would think, okay, I now have a nice easy shot up that hill to Washington Avenue. When you get to Washington Avenue, it's no longer an easy shot, that's all we're saying, is that if you haven't actually set foot on that part of that road yet, you really should as we move forward with how you're doing this.
No.
And maybe by the time the public hearing, you'll have an opportunity to look at it and find something.
Sure, absolutely.
And then also, it's kind of dangerous, there's like a sharp bend before you come up to the top.
It's a narrow road.
It could be.
You're not going to take it, are you?
It is not a road that the average resident would normally use, let me put it that way, it's, it's.
Now, wait a minute, I can slow it down.
I know, you used it a lot.
It's a gravel road, it's not paying, unless you're going to pay it, but it's just a gravel road, so.
So those are, they're, the other question that was brought forward that, that's interesting to think about. We all know how the Washington Avenue and 50 intersection is a blind intersection. Makes it difficult moving anything in and out of there. And as you already have another facility out there on Washington Road, it's curious as to know whether or not you would be using Sabo as your primary for that as well now versus dealing with that hazardous intersection that we have at Washington and 50, and the steep upgrade. If you're coming off 50 onto Washington, you know, it has that very steep upgrade at the beginning there, so. That's just a couple of things that, that came through, you know, as, as, as we move forward, and that is the plan, the meeting has been adjusted and everything. So, but let me let you finish first, is there any, any other stuff that you wanted to bring forward?
I mean, we can go into as much detail as far as the plans and specifics as you guys want to. I guess it probably would be worthwhile taking a look at the, at the engineer's review letter, maybe.
You haven't done that.
Give that through quick and just chat about a few things on that. So I guess we can just jump right into it?
Sure.
Comment one was a boundary survey of the project site, so that's not something, we typically don't do boundary surveys. Boundary surveys aren't usually done until, unless you're subdividing or, you know, it's not something we, we plan on doing. We will put together a larger scale exhibit that can see the whole property and put some additional setback distances on that, but we're not, you know, boundary surveys can get pretty involved trying to track down all the, you know, for distance, we're not adjusting any lot lines. We don't believe there's any real reason to do a full boundary survey. We plan on putting together a larger exhibit that shows the whole property and where our facilities are relative to the whole property, with some additional setback distances, or I guess not really setbacks, but just some additional distances on there, so. We plan on making that, I wouldn't call it a quote boundary survey though.
Right, and if I might, and I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Yonker about that as well. And it's kind of tied to the purpose for which it's being asked, and even in a non-OG setting, often it's just the germain portion we're asking for, I didn't, I assumed that maybe you guys survey the leased space portion for the purpose of the lease. Or you have a document that kind of has that tagged enough that it's useful enough for the purposes that we have.
Typically, they're using more of the acreage listed in the, in the deed as the actual lease amount, not necessarily taking every corner of it down.
How about your comp, what would you call it, the compom, the well pad comp?
Your earth, when I look at your earth movement piece here, are you guaranteeing me that you are not against any other property boundary?
Yeah, so, correct.
That's, yeah, so.
It looks like Matt's probably.
Then I think that's probably what's going to end up having to be noted, is the concept, because, you know, without, without the property survey and the larger scale drilling, it's hard for us, and thus the reason the ordinance has it in it, to be able to say, hey, we protected landowner over here from what's going to be happening there.
Sure, yeah, so now, when we are close, like right in through here, we, we're trying, we'll locate those corners and make sure we stay off of areas that we, you know, not as well as the property for sure.
Again, the purpose of the accuracy, or the, the extent of accuracy is for the purpose, which is the set facts, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
Yep, yep.
Right, yeah, and, and we do, and Tom's correct, we, we spoke, and I mean, I'm trying to find the, the total acreage of the site. I know it's in the application somewhere, but in terms of the size of it, sort of my, my concern with, with the.
184.
184, so that's a big area, and sort of my concern was that the Lennon Smith letter says, "A complete boundary survey of the subject site has not been provided," but the section that he quotes, 502 A1A, doesn't require a complete boundary survey, it just says, you know, property information, it does use the word survey, but, but not complete boundary survey, which, and I spoke to Tom as well, that yes, I can understand if any other conditional use applications coming in on a small, one acre parcel, and you need to make sure it meets certain requirements, that might be, you know, required, but for 180 acres to have a complete boundary survey done and prepared, when we're only focusing on this particular area here, seemed like a waste of resources, and it wasn't exactly what was asked for in the ordinance or required in the ordinance.
And, and again, I, I believe that those differences can be addressed if you can show us that you are protecting these certain areas where you are close to an adjoining property.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have the right to tell you that for a fact, I'm just saying as we move forward, being able to do that and to be able to define that you aren't close to anybody else on any of the rest of it.
All we need is a depiction that shows the relevant distances enough for them to make the assessment.
Right. Alright, that's not a problem, we're working on that. The next comment, number two, it gets into some of the grading ordinance standards, something we hadn't necessarily considered with previous development in Mount Pleasant, we consider this more of a SADO type of requirement, so we haven't necessarily, we've never built a, a site to this standard here in Mount Pleasant, well, anywhere. But we don't typically use benches, we do, you know, have a geotechnical report done for these, and so we certainly have a, a full geotechnical report to back up what our design is for ours, but it doesn't necessarily follow that benching requirement, and actually, we, we really physically couldn't build that, and also we wouldn't necessarily want to build such a thing, because it would be, you know, contrary to what our recommendations from our geotechnical engineer had stated, so that's one that we were hoping, looks like it's, again, that we consider it to be part of the SADO, and we don't necessarily think we're, we follow the SADO, so the state has reviewed our geotechnical permit date, had our application for three months, which is actually a pretty good term of time for the state, because they will be 150 days sometimes, so they certainly put good eyes on our geotechnical information and have had, you know, had comments and questions on it, so. Not sure where that, how that would get figured out, but.
Yeah, whenever you're done, I can comment on it.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and again, the engineer paraphrasing, the ordinance as well, the ordinance is applicable, and in a way, it would potentially tie in directly. It's really not a direct SADO, it's just because the ordinance, the zoning ordinance itself goes straight to grading as applicable per the SADO, instead of cut and pasting, they kind of reference reference.
Yeah.
There is an argument that if applicable, it would apply. At the same time, where the overall, you know, local state law regarding this, prior practice here, interpretation's acceptable, and as I've advised the township, and I think we have in the past, the ESGCP permitting process kind of fuses like a, the, the stormwater and the grading, so this comment's also a germain, kind of, applicable kind of stormwater as well. And they're encompassing enough that they cover virtually everything you would encompass in your local grading ordinance, except for things that you may ask for away from them, because they're not germain or kind of, et cetera, et cetera. The, the, the degree to which the, the grading earth disturbance, and the, the stormwater is managed, overseen, et cetera, by DEP is such that the, the township can't accept an interpretation that's not applicable and that we do, we do cede to the DEP, and you are allowed to accept the ESCPG, sorry, I have trouble with the alphabet. Standards for the purpose of the application. The second note on that, that was, that's informational, you know, to the extent that a township might, if, if to the extent that it would apply, just a note, these are a couple of the differences that was informational for them, and you've kind of touched on those.
Okay, that's good to hear. Number three, it talks about setbacks, we did provide the information, so in that, what I described is sort of a larger zoom back exhibit that shows the entire parcel, we're also going to do a little better job of the show, some distances as well as, we'll also include that, the school, setback distance as well, we'll do that all in that one exhibit, so that's not an issue, we'll be able to take care of that just fine. Alright, so moving into comment four, again, some of the similar stuff regards to, I thought more of SADO, but his, it seems like the, this actually is zoning, so geotechnical report, as I mentioned, we do have one, we didn't think it was, we haven't submitted them before, so we can provide a copy of that geotech report, that shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, and informationally, that'd be appreciated, even though we're.
Yep.
I think the engineer assumed you have one, the purposes as well.
Yep. And then four B is the, the sound, so as he noted, that there is a property line that does see, without mitigated, a sound impact does exceed the 60, so we will provide you an exhibit that shows what our proposed law is to get us underneath that 60, and in my opinion, probably shouldn't be in that, in that report, but.
And that's something that you can present at the time of the public hearing, frankly, in a, I don't know if this is a scenario, but if it wasn't determined exactly, because sometimes it's borderline, it can also be a permit condition, you know, a final permit condition, but if you have it in place and can present it at the hearing.
We should be, so we'll have a response letter with all the attachments that would go along depicting where that law was and what did reduce sound level would be then.
And I think that, I mean, thinking back to our other applications for Lesnick, I believe, I mean, we had sort of, the night of the hearing, it's sketched out and identified it as an exhibit, but we have enough time now to prepare something and have it, you know, not hand drawn or.
No, this will be, and I think that was more something we were doing above and beyond, in this case, that actually we're going to need it to meet the requirements. And then five is a PPC plan, we have, it's still listed as a draft, we can probably get that to be taken to the final stage.
So the only reason those PPC plans are listed as a draft is because of the address, so I just need to work with the secretary and likely just get that address approved, and then that'll be finalized for the PPC plan.
So you're just waiting on the 911 address so that you can finish it up?
Mm-hmm.
Do you, just for my own information, not necessarily because it's in an ordinance or anything, do you, do you stage your emergency plans based on the excavation version versus the pre-drilling version versus the drilling version? Or do you write one big one and treat it the same regardless of what's going on at the site?
One, one large one that handles all conditions, it has different sets of plans inside of it for each one of those operations.
Okay.
But it does, it's one big universal PPC plan.
Per, per site, I mean, it's site specific.
Oh, it's site specific, yes, but it covers the different operations, it is site specific, but yes. I mean, a lot of it is canned information that's pulled from one report to the next, but it is a site-specific PPC plan. I think that's all I saw, so a few of those will take care of, we just got this letter not too long ago, so we'll have a, a response put together fairly quickly on that. And I guess just one thing further, I know you saw the geotech, so there was, there is a lot of other stuff in the background that isn't in the binders, so there's full environmental reports, the stormwater management report, the geotech, there's erosion control report, so there's a lot of other things that we don't necessarily bury in the township with paperwork, these are all things that were viewed by the state. So I did, if it's helpful, kind of, just so you can show what our coordination, or see what our coordination was, this is kind of like one of the letters, one of our last letters, we had to respond to DEP to secure the permit, and also includes the cover sheets of all those other reports that I mentioned, just so you can see the environmental, you know, reports and stuff we do for these sites. Again, not necessarily you have to kill a ton of trees and with gigantic binder submissions here, but just to give you an idea what stuff does go back behind our, our DEP application.
And, and Carl, those were ESCGP, erosion and sediment and stormwater, or is that for the drill permits?
This is all just for the earth disturbance ESCGP permit, so this is primarily, again, stormwater, environmental wetlands, you know, going out there looking for streams and wetlands out there, the geotechnical that we talked about, the erosion control report as well, so it's just a. And again, I figured it's just easy to give you the, like, little cover sheets to see what's going, what goes into these. And we can certainly provide what you guys want to see, but rather than just putting everything.
Yeah, that one's for whether, on a parallel, you know, radio for tracking on, if needed, for informational purposes, it's much appreciated.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, we, we find that a lot, I mean, I know this community has had a lot of experience, they don't, we're the first or so, a lot of other communities, we don't go, where we go to, not as active, they don't understand the DEP component of this, the inspections that it go on. not as active, they don't understand the DEP component to this, the inspections that go on, you know, the, the public availability of those inspections. I mean, sometimes we do have, you know, the code enforcement officer or the, the township engineer, is it, well, I need to inspect this, then the other thing. And it's already covered by the DEP inspectors with a fine tooth comb.
Yes, to say the least.
And for example, they have even kind of a, you're familiar with municipal stuff as well, your under-stormwater ordinance, you have your standard OAM agreement, et cetera, et cetera. They have the equivalent of that in the DEP.
Yeah, so when we file for our permits, there's a maintenance plan that, you know, talks, talks about how we maintain our stormwater basins. The one thing different with us, not to get too far in the weeds, but, so typically like an NPDS permit or something that's permanently installed, those stormwater facilities are supposed to, a covenant is created around those so that they are always maintained. DEPs acknowledge that the, the stormwater facility is going to go away. Well, you know, 30 years from now, when we rip out the pad, reclaim the pad, everything comes out. So it's not a permanent facility like you might see in a subdivision.
Right.
So we don't, we get, we don't have to do that.
It may not be recorded, but you stop that to it.
Correct. They're still maintenance scheduled inspections and all that. We just don't record that covenant, correct.
Yeah, we want to bring up the, Bill found something when we were reviewing the book. Just wanted to make sure you all were given a heads up about it. Did you know you accidentally put somebody's social security number in your book?
Oh, no. When I paid the court, this is the one who gave me a heads up on that, and I meant to mention that to you as well.
I remember we talked about it, Andrew.
It's not, and none of that documentation is up in a public setting at this point or anything, so.
No, but it is. Somebody could request it at any time, so we can definitely, where, where exactly was the?
It was in the.
In the lease or?
Yeah, it was, it was for her nephew, your nephew?
Oh, Bridgich.
Must have been a lease.
Yeah, it was in the agreement, but I forget what.
One of the pieces of papers you asked him to provide has his social security number on it and then it got copied.
If we happen to get, it's all in our minds, so if we did happen to get a, a, you know, a thought, an information request about that, we'll certainly.
We can swap it out with the redacted version.
Sure.
No problem. I just don't know.
In fact, just for the hearing exhibit, that'll be the first time it really becomes a.
Okay, I'll get you a redacted version of that.